Well, see, either one of you look like you could be a pastor, so. Before I call this meeting to order, I want to recognize that Councilmember Cordero, who's participating in the meeting via Zoom this evening. So now I would like to call the meeting to order for the City Council meeting of July 19th, 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll and make an announcement about accessing the meeting?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 87353088822. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cordero, are you present?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Present.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Present.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Here. First on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Businesses of the Month. Mr. Morris, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's an honor to be back with you again this month as we continue our Business of the Month presentations. It's a partnership with the council that we are pleased to be engaged in this year. As you know, each month we are recognizing two businesses. For this year, we are doing a manufacturer in our community and a women-owned business in the Santa Maria as well. So tonight, I'd like to start with our manufacturing business, and that is Central Coast Packaging, represented by their owner, Paul Carlotti, and his family, who are here with him as well this evening. Central Coast Packaging is a unique business that demonstrates the principle of find a need and solve it. The company provides a wide and unique range of services, including supplies for the ag industry, the strawberry boxes and other kinds of packing boxes. They offer specialized trucking, wine packaging supplies, apparel decoration, including embroidery and printing, custom laser etching, industrial motor parts and services, air compressor services, and custom machine manufacturing. The business was formed in 2000. It currently has 17 employees working directly for the business and another 20 people who work for outside-related organizations. Central Coast Packaging contributes to many organizations in our community. Some of those include the Elche Rodeo, the Elche Golden Circle, Cruising for Life, and many of the other car shows, St. Mary's School and Church, Santa Barbara County Fair, Make a Wish Foundation, sporting events for our high schools, and fundraisers supporting law enforcement, military and veteran groups, and other cancer organizations. So you can tell they're an incredibly generous organization and family. The company is now working to build its own new wax machines to improve their operations and also looking to expand into providing windmills to help our ag industry with frost protection in the field. So again, find a need and solve it. So, Mayor, with that, I'd like to introduce Paul Carlotti with Central Coast Packaging.
You don't get away that easy, Paul.
He's so busy doing all these kinds of things, he's got no time for work.
You need until they're required to give a 20-minute speech.
Right. You'll have to add that to the application.
But you know what? I met Paul and his beautiful family when I worked for the Chamber. Gosh, that was back in 2005, and he was always somebody that you could rely on for anything, whether, you know, it was funds or whether it was providing whatever we needed for any kind of event that we were producing. And Paul, you've just, you know, you've grown your business, and your family is just gorgeous. I love your wife. We've had good times together as well, and it's just been great. So thank you so much for what you do to our community and with our community. Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Our women-owned business this month is That's Fetch. That's Fetch offers a unique pet grooming spa, S-P-A-W, right? Boutique and bistro that honors our pet companions. The grooming spa works to minimize stress, and the boutique offers a variety of items to maximize the human and animal bond. Business was formed in 2017, currently employs eight people. Is that, did we get that? Eight people? And I think it's a positive indicator that she indicates they have a waitlist of clients trying to get in. So that's a good thing for businesses, right? People that are waiting to come and work with you. Their owner, Linda Greco, is here, and she is the co-founder and president of the Santa Barbara County Animal Care Foundation, an organization that has been instrumental in drastically decreasing the number of euthanasia cases over the last 20 years in the North County animal shelters. Although That's Fetch donates to a variety of local causes, that organization is their charity of choice. Linda was also recently appointed to the newly-formed Santa Barbara County Animal Advisory Committee. So, Mayor, members of the council, could I introduce to you Linda Greco?
I don't know whether many people come up and talk, but the last two years, two-plus years, have been really tough, and I'm sure that you've heard that within the community. The day that I found out that I was going to get this award was a tough morning, and I have to say that the response that I gave back to Molly was, "Thank you." It just was one of those things that validated us coming through. When I was a kid growing up, we tended to go to Santa Barbara or San Luis Obispo to buy things because we didn't have the stores here in Santa Maria. So when my daughter and I decided to open a business, we were being encouraged to open in Santa Barbara or San Luis because that tended to be more the uniqueness of the business that we were opening. And we said, "No." We wanted it here in our town. My husband is many generations. I came here when I was nine months old. My kids were raised here. My grandchildren will be here. And so one of the things that I would say to anybody, if you're thinking of starting a business, if there's something that is a passion to you, by all means, go forward, learn to put a business plan together, and please open more businesses that are unique and fun for the Santa Maria area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations to both the businesses, and thank you for being here in Santa Maria. And I know, Linda, I've been in Fetch when you first opened up, and it is, it is, I guess I've never got things for my dog there because we have outside dog hunting dogs, but it's very, a very unique business. And if you haven't been there, just going to look, people need to go and look around. But thank you. Next, we have Public Comment Period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the Public Comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the Public Comment Period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And, Madam Mayor, I do have one written communication and three requests to speak in the building, and at this point, no hands-on.
Okay.
So the written communication I received was from Isabel Ontiveros, expressing concerns about the building of a transitional center on Ben Wiley and the problems of overcrowding in the neighborhood and depreciation of property values. And then we have three speakers.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Eileen Armijo, and followed by Estra Jensen. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening. And good evening again, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. Over the objections raised by NESBIT, on November 19th, 2019, the City Council approved the current model lease and its enforcement agreement. It then took 130 weeks, yes, that's two and a half years, to get mobile home rent stabilization back on the City Council agenda. As you know, on June 7th this year, this council approved the following motion. Following council discussion and public input on motion, direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement to see if there was room or improvement and to look at alternatives. Thank you again, Councilmember Soto, Councilmember Escobedo, and Councilmember Cordero for passing this motion. We, mobile homeowners, have been and remain anxious to help implement the motion. Then just today, six weeks later, I did receive an email on behalf of Assistant City Manager Hackelman stating, I quote, "Mr. Hackelman wanted me to reach out to you and notify you that we are currently in process of coordinating a meeting for the mobile home model lease. As soon as we have a date and time, we will contact you." Thank you, Mr. Hackelman. That does seem promising. As I stated on June 21st, I am positive that willing and open-minded participants can and will find positive solutions. Fair, beneficial, mandatory, and enforceable mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria is achievable. I'm positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Armijo, followed by Estra Jensen.
My name's Eileen Armijo, and I live at La Maria Mobile Home Park. I want to thank you for coordinating a committee that will review some of the model lease because it's important, especially to the residents of my park who are not covered under the model lease. A mobile home park resident, they own their home, as I said before, but they do not own their land that it sits on. The interests of the mobile homeowners to protect his rights and equity in a home are often at odds with the interest of the landowners to make a profit on the land. This is very, very true when you look at our park, that we have some of the highest rents there is in Santa Maria. We have people that live in small single Y that pay way over $1,000 a month. You have seniors that it gives them affordable housing. It gives them some dignity as they grow old because they own a mobile home. At least they own something. Unfortunately, you have a lot of park owners that don't look at it that way. They look at it as a way to make a profit. We need affordable housing here. It's just not all about profit and corporations. Our mobile home park was sold to a corporation, and it changed immensely from the way it was before with a private owner to a corporation who only looks at profits. And sometimes they do any way they can use to make profits. They raise our, they raise the rent every time it sells by 10%. And I know I've told you this, but people who live in single Y, small little mobile homes, and it's sold, say, five times in 10 years, their rent is $1,100 a month. I live in a double Y, and it's sold once, and my rent is $780. In the same park, on a large piece of land, the inequality and the way they raise their rents needs to be an equity between the owners and the people who rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Estra Jensen?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen, members. I'm Estra Jensen from La Maria Mobile Home Park and also representative of the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Home Team. I continue to be interested in moving forward on our concern for a rent stabilization ordinance. Things aren't getting any easier for our residents. It pains me to see on a regular basis our seniors crawling around in the big dumpsters looking for cans and bottles to recycle for extra money. Never did I think I would ever see that happen. People, we have got to move on this issue. It shouldn't be just tabled to a future date. Our seniors are hurting with the conditions today. It doesn't look like it'll be getting any better in the near future. How can we help you? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Consent Calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The Consent Calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of councilmembers.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? None? None?
If not, Madam Mayor, I would put out the Consent Calendar as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have an annual July appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and begin the staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. The City Council will consider making appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee, the Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens, Area Agency on Aging, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak or any correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. So, so let's start with the Block Grants Advisory Committee.
Okay. The Block Grants Advisory Committee, on the committee, there are five vacancies at this time. Staff received applications from three incumbents, Rosalie Marquez, previously nominated by Councilmember Cordero, Tim Seifert, previously nominated by Madam Mayor, Patino, and Jason Tamora, previously nominated by Councilmember Escobedo, but I believe that may have been Councilmember Moats. So I apologize for that. The two new applications, there were two new applications received by Hugo Canton and Blanca Mejia. The appointees will serve a term of three years each, ending in July 2025. A nomination may be made by each councilmember. Appointments will then be confirmed by the mayor with ratification by the City Council.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cordero, did you have a nomination?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I will be nominating Rosie Marquez again as a member. I've spoken to her, and she's very interested in continuing on.
Councilmember Escobedo, did you have a nomination?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Jason Tamora.
Okay. Councilmember Soto, did you have a nomination?
I do not at this time, Madam Mayor.
And Councilmember, oh, Waterfield, did you have a nomination?
Not at this time.
Okay. And I would like to nominate Tim Seifert to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. So I need a second. I'll accept these nominations. Do I? Second? And...
I'll second it, Madam Mayor, if I can, and...
That's fine, thank you.
Double second.
I think, I think we have a second.
So, and we will appoint these nominees to the Block Grants Committee. And any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
So, Madam Clerk, can you continue?
The next item we have is for the Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens, Area Agency on Aging. This commission serves both the Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. The commission's Board of Directors is responsible for its operations, policy setting, allocations, and personnel. Nomination to the board would be for a term of two years and would begin once appointed by the Board of Directors for the commission, following the nomination by the City Council. We received one new application from Nancy Crawford, who is not a resident of the city of Santa Maria. However, the board provides a very focused service to seniors, and her application indicates her educational background and experience is in the area of older adult mental health and in nursing. The City Council may want to consider this applicant to serve on this regional board despite the existence of the City Council policy of only nominating city residents to boards. The city has not had a nominee to this board since July of 2017, when the seat was last held by Beth Kaiser. The nomination is to be made by the mayor with ratification by the council.
Yes, and I would, Nancy, could you stand so everyone can see? I would like to appoint Nancy Crawford to the Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens for the two-year period, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and I served on that committee years ago, and it is so valuable and so important to our community. So I thank you very much for doing that. So please continue.
The next board we'll be speaking about is the Library Board of Trustees. There are two expiring terms on the Library Board of Trustees. Incumbents Charlie Baker Boyd and Helen Galvan have each reapplied. These two vacancies have new terms ending in July of 2025. There is one other vacancy with an unexpired term ending in July 2024. Three new applications were received from Randy Jackson, Hunter Jamison, and Julie Weaver. The mayor will make appointments with ratification by the City Council.
So I would like to make the motion to appoint Charlie Baker Boyd, Helen Galvan, and Hunter Jamison, and to complete the term ending in 2022. I mean, 2024, I saw four there, I said two.
Madam Mayor, can I just confirm?
Sure.
That your nomination for Charlie Baker Boyd and Helen Galvan, which are the incumbents, that their term is for the 2025?
Yes.
And the appointment of Hunter Jamison is for the unexpired term of 2024?
24, that's right. Thank you. Okay, I need a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Thank you.
Please continue.
The last committee we're considering this evening is the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee. There is one expiring term on the County of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee. Incumbent Betty Gunn has reapplied. No other applications were received, and the mayor can make the appointment with ratification by the City Council. But before we move on, I just wanted to let the council know that I would, the remaining vacancies that were postponed, we will go ahead and continue to advertise and bring back other applications at a later time.
Thank you. So I will make a motion to appoint Betty Gunn to the County Library Advisory. I have a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
And Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny a planned development permit and conditional use permit for Sunset Recycling to establish a buyback recycling facility for California, excuse me, California redemption value CRV beverage containers on a 19.62-acre site in a planned development central business district of the Entrada Este specific plan.
And the staff report is to be made by Director of Community Development, Mr. Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a presentation for the Appeal of Sunset Recycling Center. This is, the proposed recycling center is located on the shopping, the Foods Co Shopping Center. This is on the southwest corner of Stoll and South Broadway. This is an aerial photo of the project site. The recycling facility would be on the parking lot. The property is owned commercial. It is surrounded by other uses. There are some residential neighborhoods to the west. It is on Broadway, and there is commercial uses on the other side of Broadway. This is a zoning map to provide some context for the use. This is a proposed site plan of the shopping center or part of the shopping center, and you can see there's a small square or bubble indicating the location of the proposed recycling facility. I'll zoom in a little bit. So again, this is the location. It's on several parking spaces, and the facility would include two roll-off steel containers as well as a kiosk in the front. I have an image of this. The facility looks like this. Again, you can see the customer kiosk and the metal roll-off containers to the rear of the kiosk. This is not exactly what it will look like, but this is typical for the recycling facility. These are just dimensions and some of the kiosk. There will be some landscaping provided to provide some type of aesthetic relief. Here's another photo showing the proposed facility location. This has been through Planning Commission review, and they've, and this is being brought before you because this was denied by the Planning Commission. The applicant has worked with staff and the Planning Commission on several locations that would minimize the impacts, and this was, this is probably the fourth location that was being discussed between the applicant and staff and Planning Commission. And this is setback some distance from South Broadway, but it is also a good distance from the gas station and also away from the grocery store. There was some concerns of the other locations. There were other locations considered, but there was concerns regarding impacts to vehicle traffic or with customers visiting the gas station or with customers visiting the grocery store. There was another consideration for locating the recycling facility behind the grocery store, but there were concerns regarding nuisance that could occur with a recycling center located behind a grocery store. So this is, in some ways, a location that ended up being a compromise resulting from discussions on concerns of the proposed recycling facility. This is a street view of the shopping center and an approximate location of where the recycling facility would be located. This is another street view. This is looking south on Broadway. Again, the, on the parking lot is the proposed location for the recycling facility. One more photo, there's a 30-foot distance setback that staff and the Planning Commission had requested so that there wouldn't be any impediments to the drive aisles and also for traffic circulation. As a matter of background, there are some governing statutes for recycling facilities, and this is some information on the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act. It requires cities to identify convenience zones.
Mr. Ing, Mr. Escobedo has a question.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we go back to the, yeah, to that one? That means that they're proposing to put the facility after the 30 or within the 30?
Councilmember Escobedo, thank you for the question. Yes, the slide is a little bit unclear. The 30-foot is the additional buffer, so it would be further to the right of the screen. so it would be further to the right of the screen, right of the arrow. So beyond the arrow is where the recycling facility is proposed to be located.
Thank you. And one more question. The other four places or locations that were discussed was within the same area, correct?
I believe one of the location was closer to the gas station. One location was closer to the grocery store, and the other location was behind the grocery store. So for all three other locations, there were concerns that there would be conflict with customers visiting either the gas station, the grocery store, or if it's behind the grocery store, concerns about nuisance.
Thank you.
So the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act really, in summary, asks that that these recycling facilities be located in our neighborhoods. And there are zones that are to be established to provide convenience to residents. The goal of the statutes are to make it easy for residents to redeem their recyclables for the redemption values. And this project site is considered a convenience zone, given the supermarket Foods Co within this shopping center. And a query of the CalRecycle database has determined that this convenience zone does not have a certified recycling center, and so this proposal would fulfill that need. Here are some information about the facility's operations. This facility would accept California redemption value CRV beverage containers. So this includes glass, plastic, aluminum containers. This will comply with the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act and would be a certified recycling center. The hours of operations would be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays and 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on weekends. The applicant has provided a maintenance plan that includes daily cleaning and biweekly surface power cleaning, and they would also adhere to stormwater management practices. Metal containers can be exchanged as needed to avoid overflow. This is a history of the prior hearings. This originally went before the Planning Commission back in October of 2021. The Planning Commission provided concerns regarding the project, including traffic congestion, inconsistency with the character of the shopping center, and impacts on neighboring properties due to unsightly unscreened metal containers. This was brought back before the Planning Commission on December 2021. The applicant had requested a continuance, and this was later heard by the Planning Commission in February. And during this time, the applicant had worked with staff on the various alternatives mentioned, but the Planning Commission still had the same concern. And they voted to deny the project in March 2022. The Planning Commission formally denied the project with findings attached. These are the findings for denial. This is kind of a short summary. The full findings are in the resolution of the staff report. But in summary, the Planning Commission found that the project would impede vehicular circulation. This includes, again, customers arriving to the gas station, truck deliveries, customers arriving to the grocery store, customers entering and exiting off of Broadway. They also found that this will create traffic congestion. This is related to the first finding, and also create a negative aesthetic impact along the South Broadway Commercial Corridor. Given these findings, this is the recommendation.
Mr. Ing.
Yes.
Mr. Cordero has a question.
Yes.
So, Mr. Cordero?
Councilmember Cordero. There we go. Yes.
Mr. Ing, are there other places that this service is being provided and could be taken care of outside of this location within a reasonable driving distance from Santa Maria?
Councilman Cordero, my understanding is that there are no facilities within our city boundaries that are located at a shopping center. There are other recycling facilities. There are, there's a few on West Bed Arabia, but not the type that is located in conjunction with a shopping center or a grocery store such as this.
Okay, thank you very much. But there is a place where, as a, as a customer, I could take and turn these items in elsewhere other than here?
Councilman Cordero, I didn't catch the last part.
Yeah, I don't think he caught all of that, Mr. Cordero.
I see, there is a, there are, there is a location where this service can be provided other than on South Broadway.
This is one proposal. You know, any other applicant proposing a recycling facility such as this, they will have to go through the same review process.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chung.
The recommendation is before you that the City Council adopt a resolution to deny the appeal and affirm the decision made by the Planning Commission to deny planned development permit and conditional use permit for Sunset Recycling Corporation to establish a buyback recycling facility on the parking lot of the Santa Maria Shopping Center located at 1465 South Broadway. I'm available for any questions you may have. Cody Graeble, he was a project planner on this. He's also available. The applicant's representatives, I believe, Mr. Brian Jackson is in the audience representing the appellant, and also, I believe, we have representatives online on the Zoom call.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Ing? Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I get it right, what kind of customers will be going to this buyback recycling? Would be just, you know, people bringing the box of, a bag of recycling they pick up, or is it a business going there? Or what kind of service exactly?
Yeah, Councilmember Escobedo, residents, they can bring their aluminum cans, glass bottles, and redeem them for its redemption value.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So is the applicant available to make any comments? If you'd like to.
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Brian Jackson, and I'm representing Sunset Recycling this evening. Firstly, thank you for taking the time to hear our appeal to the Planning Commission's decision to deny our application for a conditional use permit to establish an urgently needed state-certified beverage container redemption center in the city of Santa Maria. As you're probably aware, there are currently no beverage container recycling facilities in Santa Maria, and residents either have to travel to the nearest facility, which is at Spencer's Market, which I believe is in an unincorporated area of Santa Barbara County. I might be wrong. Or take their bags of bottles and cans to any of the supermarkets or beverage dealers. A beverage dealer is not classified as a full-line supermarket by CalRecycle. For example, Supertarget is a supermarket. Target is a dealer, similar to 99 Cent Store, et cetera, where they can redeem them for cash at any time during all hours the store is open. So it's not a question of just showing up between, say, Sunset's hours of 10 and 4. It's all hours. So the store's open at 6:00 in the morning, and it closes at 11:00 at night. Any member of the public with presentable recyclables has to be served. And of course, this is a considerable burden on supermarkets. So regarding state law AB 2020, which was passed in the mid to late 80s, state law mandates supermarkets. It doesn't mandate property owners, and it doesn't mandate cities. So full-line supermarkets have to either, one, provide a recycling facility within one-half mile of the store, or receive recyclables inside the store, as I mentioned previously, or, the good one, they pay $100 a day to the state of California. That's considered to be option B. There are two stores in Santa Maria. I believe the other one is Trader Joe's that pay the money to the store. So Foods Co's elected option B is they considered that receiving recyclables inside the store is a potential health hazard, and asked Sunset Recycling, who was one of their preferred recycling vendors, to install a facility on the parking lot, which would give Foods Co and all the other supermarkets, that would be Viata, and I think it's Smart and Final, they would, they would be considered served, which means that they would no longer have to pay the $100 or take the bottles and cans inside the store. So in response to Foods Co's request, Foods Co, the property owner, and Sunset Recycling worked together to evaluate three locations based on comments at three Planning Commission hearings, which at the time didn't approve or didn't deny the project. And at the last meeting, the final one, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the project based on the following six points. One, firstly, the project would be detrimental to the health of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. But we fail to understand what empirical evidence there is to support this subjective judgment, as we've never had any health problems for our staff or the public at any of our 30 recycling centers, Kroger sites that we have in California. Secondly, the project would be detrimental to the safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Sunset Recycling's best practices, which I believe were presented at a previous hearing, means that the public can redeem their CRV material for much-needed cash in a safe, clean, and friendly environment. Thirdly, the project would be detrimental to the welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Again, Sunset goes to, goes the extra mile to ensure that all customers are treated with equal respect and ensure that the safety of both employees and the public are our top priorities, together with a positive recycling experience, which means you get in line, you present your bottles and cans, you get your money, and you go away. The project would be inconsistent with the character of the shopping center and contrary to its orderly development. While we acknowledge the Planning Commission's important role in these matters, Sunset Recycling believes that a recycling facility would add to the character and development of the shopping center by not only making recycling convenient for residents, but by making a statement that Santa Maria is making a positive contribution to reducing landfills, which was the object of the original AB 2020, and will be helping with our current environment and climate issues in a small way, but in an important way. Number five, the project would increase onsite traffic congestion, and this would occur from area traffic being potentially obstructed due to the proximity to the busy South Broadway. As previously mentioned, in cooperation with Foods Co and the property owner, Sunset Recycling agreed on a fourth proposed location, which was further away from the main entrance to the center. Sunset operates at many busy shopping centers, and we have the operational experience to serve the local community without causing traffic congestion at any centers. And finally, the inability to screen the facility from South Broadway would result in a project that is inconsistent with the character of the shopping center and contrary to its orderly development. Once again, we feel that we can provide artificial drought-friendly plants around the facility, but the main kiosk screens the roll-off containers, and it's not exactly as we showed in that photograph. I did send something into Cody with a rendering of what it might look like. So the kiosk screens the roll-off containers, and granting Sunset Recycling a conditional use permit would only add to the character of the shopping center. So in conclusion, in the interest of the residents of Santa Maria, Foods Co, and the environment, we respectfully ask the council to reconsider our application for a conditional use permit and allow Sunset to serve the community. Thank you. Any questions? I will be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Jackson? No? Okay. Mr. Cordero, any questions?
No, I think he explained himself quite well, and thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, before we hear from the public, were there any questions then you thought, Mr. Ing? Madam Clerk, I'd like to open up the public hearing.
Just not listening to the guy talk, so. Listening to the guy talk, so.
You have someone else hiding under there. Okay, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, no, we do not at this time. And no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, so who was, who was that guy?
I think that was Alex Pasada.
Yes, yeah, accidentally.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I muted him back, though.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for consideration or denial of the appeal and affirming the Planning Commission's decision to deny. So anyway, who wants to start?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and start.
Sure. Ms. Waterfield?
If no one wants to start.
It is.
Yes, okay. Looking at the renderings and the pictures in regards to what it would look like, there's a reason why Vons got rid of their recycling and Albertsons got rid of their recycling, because it just was detrimental to the aesthetics of their business, and it did cause traffic congestion. And I think with this piece of property being right in front and center of Santa Maria, I don't think any type of aesthetics could help make this look better. You're gonna, that is a very busy shopping center, and especially during the holidays, it's just, you've got lines going in and out of the south exit of that shopping center. And I'm pretty sure that the Community Bank of Santa Maria would not like to see that type of business right there. So it's, you know, it's not difficult to make this decision because I just, you want to add something aesthetically pleasing to the area, and I don't think this would be one of those situations.
Well, as you mentioned, and I know with Albertsons and with Vons on East Main Street, we got so many phone calls from people asking us to close it down in the years past because that, the people that went there, it flowed over into the neighborhoods.
Yes, they did, they did.
And so people were not happy with that, with East Main and then with, and then Albertsons closed.
Absolutely.
So it was, it was an issue, and it was a problem and complaints that we received from the city, so I can remember that.
So I will not be voting in favor of this item.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion? Oh, Mr. Cordero, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would agree with everything that Councilwoman Waterfield said. I don't think it, it's only the aesthetics that are counter to the, to the environment there. I think it's just, it's just, it's a parking lot. It is not and was never designed as a temporary business that's going to put a kiosk there of any kind. And it's tantamount, and you may hear this again in the not-too-distant future, but it's tantamount to trying to get a square peg in a round hole. And I don't believe it's the right thing to do. That's why I asked a question to Mr. Chung. Are there other places this can be done? And there are other places in the city and that are not a terribly long drive if someone is going to have the need for that kind of extra funds. The, we're not shutting them down. We're allowing them and asking them to go to a more appropriate place. So I would vote to support the commissioners in their effort to deny this.
Is that a motion, Mr. Cordero?
Yes, it would be a motion, Madam Mayor, if someone else wants to.
Second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, Madam.
Oh, Mr. Escobedo?
Yes, Madam.
Now, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah. I think it's, it's needed. I mean, we need to, to recycle, we need a place inside the city of Santa Maria. However, the, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the location. I just went there this weekend, and it was during, it was chaos. It was a lot of traffic and adding a little bit more there, that it will end up being more traffic, people, you know, walking and it just, I think it's, it's great. I think it would be great to have one, but in this specific location, I don't think it's ideal, unsafe for our community.
Especially with the gas station there.
Oh, sometimes the lines go all the way.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson, for being here.
Could I just make one comment?
Sure. Come up to the podium, please.
Just a matter of history. The two recycling facilities that were in Santa Maria closed because replant, an operational disaster compared to Sunset. They weren't bankrupt and closed overnight. So that was actually what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr.? Yes, Mr. Hackelman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And council members, good evening. Really quick update today. We are working on for the next council meeting and update and presentation from a community partner. And we anticipate having another appeal at the next council meeting as well. And that concludes the update.
Thank you. And Mr. Escobedo, we'll start with you. Oral reports.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. Nothing to report, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Soto?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Cordero?
Yes, I do. On the, on the 22nd of June, I did the Ben Hayes Show after the last council meeting on the 21st. On the 29th of June, I attended the economic display at the Alice Al Ranch. It was really, in, in view of the difficult times we're, we're having, was not a terrible report for Santa Barbara County. And on July the 6th, I attended a communitized board meeting. And that would be it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. June 21st, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On June 22nd, I attended the Marion Board of Directors meeting on the, no, I didn't get, I didn't do that on the 23rd. On the 24th, I did the Filipino Association Anniversary Dinner. And on the 27th, did the West Coast Customs Recap Meeting. And on July 5th, I attended a special SBKag board meeting. And on the 6th of July, the Project Opioid with Sheriff Brown, and this is down in Buellton. On July 8th, a forum to address homelessness. And July 9th, for those of you who miss it, the Pioneer Picnic. And on July 10th, attended the Sports Exhibit at the Santa Maria Oaks, which is the History of Sports in the Santa Maria Valley. And July 12th, a local infrastructure hub. And did, and on the 13th, I did the North County Subregion Planning Committee. And on the 16th, I did, I did the Relay for Life, and they exceeded their goal of 62,000. And I'm, there's money still coming in. So thank you very much, Deb. That was great. And I, you know, tonight, I would like to adjourn this meeting in a woman that I think is very, very special to so many of us in the valley, Cynthia Schur. And when Cynthia took over the newspaper here, it was, I, I just think we saw a big change. It was about the community. She was very involved in the community. She loved Santa Maria and did so much to contribute to that. And so when we start doing the Day of Hope, that was between dignity, health, and they approached the newspaper, and Cynthia was all in on that. So which helped. And, and others, the other places, newspapers did not want to do this, but she, she did this. She was such a great leader for women in our community, and we, we know we'll miss her. Very, very, very wonderful woman. And Madam Clerk, this is it. Meeting is adjourned.